Shopify helps you sell at every stage of your business. Like that, let's put it online and see what happens.
And the site is live.
County School Board regular scheduled meeting April 15th to order at this time. Mr. Bonte, can you do our invocation please?
I'll be happy to if everyone would and if you're able, please stand with me. Join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for all your many blessings. Thank you for allowing this group of people to come together and discuss the business of the Harney County Board of Education. We ask that you would be with each and every one of us as we make the decisions that we make, Lord, for Harney County schools, students, and faculty and staff. I pray you will be with each and every one in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Scott, are you going to lead us in pledge of allegiance, please, sir?
Motion to approve as presented, Mr. Chairman.
Do you agree with the decision?
No votes, the motion carries. Moving along to the public comment. Each month, part of at least one of the regularly scheduled board meetings will be set aside for citizens to address the board through public comment. A sign up sheet will be available for any individual or group to indicate their desire to address the board. The chairperson will decide the amount of time devoted to the public comments. The superintendent shall develop additional procedures to ensure public comment sessions proceeding in an efficient and orderly manner. Board members will not respond to individuals who address the board except to request clarification of points made by the presenter. Except in cases of emergency, information received during presentations will not be acted upon at the time it is received. It will take unanimous vote of the board members present to take action on presentation considered to be part of an unusual emergency nature at the time it is presented. Disruptions by any person or persons of public meeting will subject to action according to SGS 143 318.17. If the board does not hold a regular meeting during the month, the board will not provide a time for public comment in any other meeting held during that month. Unless a majority of the board votes to allow public comment at the meeting or unless the purpose of the meeting is a public hearing. Each speaker must complete each section of the sign up sheet. Each speaker must only speak three minutes. Their balance of time may be yielded to another speaker. And maximum of 30 minutes is allotted for the public comments. This allows approximately 10 speakers at three minutes per speaker. The speaker sign up sheet is removed at the beginning of the board meeting. Okay, so the first one we have is Ms. Rose Ferguson. If you will, step up and you need to give your address. You did not fill it out on here.
Good evening Superintendent to board members. I am Rose Ferguson, 155 Blue Pond Drive, Spring Lake, North Carolina. My grandson actually attends Over Hills High School. Here with some concerns, as you know, if I said before when I came to the board, I asked, inquired if we could have a town hall that we could actually engage with the community. I understand that the summit was held, however, that communication and engagement was not present. Since that time, I've been in other conversations and also done a little bit of research myself. And I have a few questions tonight. And most importantly after these questions, I would like to know how will citizens, parents, grandparents get responses to the concerns that have been addressed from the community? One of the most important things is a school improvement plan. As a former educator, retired principal, I know it's imperative to have a school improvement plan and processes in place to ensure that our, that students, their goals for their schools and that their processes and steps made to make sure there is improvement taking place. So my question tonight is upon looking at several school improvement plans, that their, their plans are incomplete, the ones that are posted online. Of course, that's a grave concern. And which committee or who's responsible for monitoring those plans? And I know I won't get answers tonight, but I definitely want to follow up to see if you could answer these questions for me. So what processes are in place to ensure that each school site has a completed school improvement plan and that goals are being tracked and monitored with valid data? Okay. Next question, who trains each school team to complete their school improvement plans? And are parents or concerned citizens a part of those teams, part of that training? And if not, how can we make sure that they are part of those, this particular process in schools? Lastly, what is the accountability system?[775.31]
Shopify helps you sell at every stage of your business. Like that, let's put it online and see what happens, stage.
And the site is live.
That reopen.
County School Board Regular Scheduled Meeting April fifteenth to order at this time. Mr. Bonte, can you do our invocation, please?
I'll be happy to, if everyone would, and if you're able, please stand with me. Join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for all your many blessings. Thank you for allowing this group of people to come together and discuss the business of the Harnett County Board of Education. We ask that you would be with each and every one of us as we make the decisions that we make, Lord, for Harnett County Schools, students, and faculty and staff. Pray you will be with each and every one, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Scott, are you the leaded and pledging the allegiance, please, sir?
Motion to approve, as presented, Mr. Chairman.
Motion and decision, no further discussion. Here is the chairman votes.
Powell votes aye.
Abate aye.
Gandy aye.
No nay votes, the motion carries. Moving along to the public comment. Each month, part of at least one of the regularly scheduled board meetings will be set aside for citizens to address the board through public comment. A sign up sheet will be available for any individual or group to indicate their desire to address the board. The chairperson will decide the amount of time devoted to the public comments. The superintendent shall develop additional procedures to ensure public comment sessions proceeding in an efficient and orderly manner. Board members will not respond to individuals who address the board except to request clarification of points made by the presenter. Except in cases of emergency, information received during presentations will not be acted upon at the time it is received. It will take unanimous vote of the board members present to take action on presentation considered to be part of an unusual emergency nature at the time it is presented. Disruptions by any person or persons of public meeting will subject to action according to GS 143 318.17. If the board does not hold a regular meeting during the month, the board will not provide a time for public comment in any other meeting held during that month. Unless a majority of the board votes to allow public comment at the meeting, or unless the purpose of the meeting is a public hearing. Each speaker must complete each section of the sign up sheet. Each speaker must only speak three minutes. Their balance of time may be yielded to another speaker. And maximum thirty minutes is allotted for the public comments. This allows approximately ten speakers at three minutes per speaker. The speaker's sign up sheet is removed at the beginning of the board meeting. Okay, so the first one we have is Ms. Rose Ferguson. If you will, step up, and you need to give your address. You do not fill it out on here.
Good evening, Superintendent to board members. I am Rose Ferguson, 155 Blue Pond Drive, Spring Lake, North Carolina. My grandson actually attends Over Hills High School. Here with some concerns, as you know, if I said before when I came to the board, I asked, inquired, if we could have a town hall, that we could actually engage with the community. I understand that the summit was held, however, that communication and engagement was not present. Since that time, I've been in other conversations and also done a little bit of research myself. And I have a few questions tonight, and most importantly, after these questions, I would like to know, how will citizens, parents, grandparents, get responses to the concerns that have been addressed from the community? One of the most important things is a school improvement plan. As a former educator, retired principal, I know it's imperative to have a school improvement plan and processes in place to ensure that our, that students, their goals for their schools, and that their processes and steps made to make sure there is improvement taking place. So my question tonight is upon looking at several school improvement plans, that their, their plans are incomplete, the ones that are posted online. Of course, that's a grave concern. And which committee, or who's responsible for monitoring those plans? And I know I won't get answers tonight, but I definitely want to follow up to see if you could answer these questions for me. So what processes are in place to ensure that each school site has a completed school improvement plan, and that goals are being tracked and monitored with valid data? Okay? Next question, who trains each school team to complete their school improvement plans? And are parents, or concerned citizens, a part of those teams, part of that training? And if not, how can we make sure that they are part of those, this particular process in schools? Lastly, what is the accountability system to ensure that all staff at every school are trained on crisis management? Because I have some really grave concerns about situations that are happening on campus. And if you make privy to those, how would the public know that you responded to those crisis concern, crisis management concerns? And how do we ensure that the accountability is there for each staff to be trained, to ensure that all of our schools are safe for all of our students across Harnett County? Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Tanya White Anderson?
Good evening, my name is Ms. Tanya White Anderson, and I'm a concerned parent, to also an advocate for the community. First, I want to thank you for this opportunity to allow me to address concerns as well. And again, as we pick it off Ms. Rose Ferguson, we're working as a team. My concern is through research, and I guess it was brought to my attention, one of the concerns I have is when I researched you all's website, there wasn't updated information on there so that we'd be able to utilize it and be able to explain to the community or the concerned parents on why information or concerns that are previously being addressed not being posted, or the numbers, or whatever is needed to be brought to their attention. And also, my other concern was data. I'm a numbers person. So I'm needing to know the school's data and how they utilize to make adjustments in the school's plan. If you may, if you all can answer that. And can the community members be on the school improvement team as well? In the position that I am right now, like I said, I'm an advocate. I just, my son graduated, but I just needed to know for, for my grandchild, for my neighbor's child. And so I just want to be that person that can give them the answers. We all have issues, yes. We all have time restraints, yes. And like I said, is, we're humbly asking for that information, not to put nobody on the spot. So I appreciate this time, and you all have a blessed evening.
Thank you. That concludes the public comment section. We're moving on to updates. Dr. Fleming?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, good evening. I hope April has been going well, as we're halfway through the month already. It's hard to believe we have a monthly meeting this late in the me, or this late in the month. I enjoyed a few days off during spring break and listening to some of our staff members. They enjoyed it as well, and you ask them what you did, and sometimes they don't want to tell you. So you just keep on moving, you know? We always need a little time to rest. April is the month of the military, military child. As the only all-time North Carolina Purple School District, we take pride in caring for our military students and military impacted families. We know many of these students have many moves, and maybe even many moves ahead of them. And we salute these students and appreciate their perseverance. Earlier this month, we celebrated our assistant principals. This was National Assistant Principals Week a couple of weeks ago. There are future school principals, and we must invest in them and grow them into our school's next leaders. Since our last regular monthly meeting, we had a great Harnett Off Broadway for Harnett Central and Triton Area Schools. Unfortunately, that was not the case for Over Hills and Western Harnett, due to a small fire at Over Hills High School. These schools have been rescheduled for tomorrow and Wednesday evening at Over Hills High School. Hope to see you there. Over the past month, I have participated in the North Harnett Regional Transit Study, and the county commissioner's work session regarding the county's growth. It was great to see so many of our parents, and I think a couple at this table, at the elementary Battle of the Books at Gentry that was held last month. As you know, we've had two significant bus situations. One involved a fire in the rear portion of a Over Hills High School activity bus returning from a competition in Cumberland County. That was on Friday. And then fast forward today, this morning, we had what I would consider a serious bus accident outside of Irwin. Minor injuries were reported to EMS. No one was transported to the hospital. And both of these items are still under investigation. I would like to thank all of the Harnett County Schools team members involved in our budget planning process this year. Tonight, we will ask for your approval. If you do approve, you may not, but if you do approve the budget request tonight, we do not plan to have our April twenty-ninth work session, because our April twenty-ninth work session was for the budget. So if we need to work on the budget, we can still have it. If not, I recommend canceling that. It doesn't take board action, just superintendent, the chairman, but the board can act if they want to either way. If we do not have that work session, our May regular monthly meeting will be that next week. And that's Monday, May sixth, at six P M. And one other item that we did not get on the agenda we were working on today. May fourteenth, eleven A M, the commissioners do have a spot for a joint meeting if we want to meet with them. We can have a conversation. We met with them earlier. We'll already have the budget passed. We can go over the budget with them. So we certainly have things we can talk about. I know H R was going to share some things with them as well. If we do not need to meet that day, that is okay, but do we, we want to have, typically in May, we always have had a joint meeting with the commissioner.
I, I think we need to sit down with them and emphasize our budget questions.
Okay. So.
I agree, Chairman.
Okay. In May fourteen to eleven A M, does that work? That's a Tuesday, I believe, isn't it, Tammy?
It is. And they will be, it will be at their?
Yeah. We met here last time, we would do Thursday, this time we just flip flopped.
And one will be provided, she said.
So Tuesday, May fourteenth, eleven A M, joint meeting. If you will, let the board clerk. Also, we have several events coming up for the board. Educators banquet, it's our Teacher of the Year banquet, April twenty-third, six P M at Gentry. And I believe this might be on your shoot as well. Parent Advisory Banquet that we typically have had with our featured guest, Jason Duke, who will give board training. May second, six P M, Gentry. And Mr. Chairman, pending any questions, that concludes my report this evening.
Dr. Fleming, what was the timing of the Teacher of the Year banquet?
Six P M at Gentry. Both of these events, six P M at Gentry.
And the second, so the twenty-third is the Teacher of the Year banquet?
Teacher of the Year twenty-third, and Advisory Council May two. That's correct. Thank you.
Well, if they had something to do with Sopios, then they'd publish April fourteenth.
That was a, a work session?
Oh, yeah, we'll cancel our April twenty-ninth work session. And now, that kind of makes sense, because we'll still have our May sixth the next week. And then on the April fourteenth, we'll have our joint meeting. I'm sorry, May fourteenth, we'll have our, I'm jumping around here. May fourteenth, we'll have our joint meeting at the, what we call, I think it's called the Harnett County Resource Center.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Anything else, Dr. Fleming? And then Mr. Matthews is not here, or you going to do anything for that, or?
No, you can skip him if he has anything when he gets here, but they did have a commissioner's meeting, so he.
Do you think he's going to make it?
He says it's possible, so.
Something that concerns me is on the bus report.
The fifty percent is what concerns me.
Well, some of them are not even fifty percent. And when I look at the reasons why stop arm not fully deployed, y'all heard me argue this one.
That's true.
I do not understand vehicle, vehicle unable to stop.
That's correct. The, the, the stop arm not being deployed, that's probably on the bus driver in many cases.
Right.
The second item is, has absolutely nothing to do with the bus driver. It apparently has to do with the speed of the.
Can, can, can we get some videos of those?
You're right, it can.
Stop, because.
Absolutely.
I don't, that's blowing my mind that unable to stop. If the stop arm's out, I don't understand that.
Yeah.
So can you, at the next meeting we have, can you bring some videos in for us to get on that?
I can.
And, let's say, if, if it's one of those things, they don't have the yellow on for long enough, and then red, you know, I could, I can almost understand why that wouldn't happen. So maybe it's something like that, but yeah, if you could show those videos, that would be, that would be great.
Yeah, that's, that would be good. I, I think kind of what concerns me a little bit is, you know, if you take a hundred, I'll just say, a hundred people that are speeding down our roads, you know, are over fifty percent of them dropped in court of law, and I don't know that they are, or over fifty percent of them cited. I would say probably most speeding situations are cited, but I, I, that's why I'm really shocked by this. I don't, I just don't know, we, it's out of our hands, so there's no way we can impact it, but I just, the speeding ones concern me.
If you could get us the information on these that are not getting issued tickets? Or their data is still in the system?
Yes, for a few months.
Can you tell us how many times they've been not ticketed? You know, like repeat offenders? Because.
Well, all your, now, when we get that drilled down, most of your repeat offenders, I think, are taken, except for rent, out of state rental car companies will not, or typically not, because they don't have to pay. So they don't even pass the bill on.
Now, can you tell me that?
No, that's very few, but still.
You have a hundred and eighty-nine citations approved, two hundred mailed, two hundred tickets mailed out. A hundred and fifty-five citations approved, a hundred and forty-one tickets mailed out. I don't understand the difference in the, yes, sir, if you don't mind.
Yeah, you're right, it can speak this language.
Yes, on, on some of them that say approval rate, once they go to get a, what do you call it, an appeal? Say, Dr. Fleming is driving my car, and I want a ticket, ticket issued to him. That takes away from the approval rate. It shows that like, that one has been dismissed, but actually it hasn't, it's just been reissued. So that's one reason your numbers aren't adding up on tickets mailed and approvals. If that's, that's the best way I know to understand it.
For the month of March, forty point six percent. February, forty-three percent. And January, fifty-two was the best month we had, I just.
There's some good news on that. If you notice, the number of buses are going up every month. Buses on the road go up, so we must be getting bus drivers.
Yeah, that's, that is true. But I can absolutely have video, but.
I know, but in February, we had four hundred and two citations reviewed. That's scary.
Yeah.
Our average is four hundred, isn't it?
If you see the ones that get reviewed, I mean, it will blow your mind on how fast some of these people are going. And to me, vehicle unable, I, this is personal opinion, I don't need to get into that, but vehicle unable to stop, a lot of them, the vehicle didn't attempt to stop, so, what I see, anyway.
That's what I don't, yeah, and I think sometimes that confuses me, because while we know, because this is civil, you can't do civil and criminal, but what shocks me is the fact that the car is speeding so fast past the bus. Not only are they not getting a criminal ticket for speeding, but they're not getting a civil ticket for running the bus either.
We know, we asked a while back, could we not coordinate with the Highway Patrol, the sheriff's officer, whoever? And on, you can pull up the numbers, which buses are ha, is happening to more, and where they're happening at? Could they not do some real enforcement through those sections for a little bit?
I think the Highway Patrol would.
They have them.
Yeah. Which I've, I've, which we have a good relationship with, troop B, and when we have a high volume area, they, if they're able to, which they're short to, so, with that, and going to accidents, so. But I know they have, like eighty-seven, they have hit them hard in front of Walmart, because that's our biggest, that's, that's our biggest one, in front of Walmart.
And along with the Highway Patrol as well, several of these are located within town limits. If we could possibly coordinate with the local town police department.
Yes.
If they can particularly keep an eye on them particularly, because some of them are in the same location every time it seems like, so.
I agree. Anything else?
And I will say, I do want, one going back to some of the comments I made with our accident today. I do think the Highway Patrol is trying, but their staff, just like D M V and others, we had to wait probably forty-five minutes to get this thing.
Yeah, and that was a short time. I mean, I've waited way longer than that.
For a bus accident?
Yeah.
So.
I've, I've waited over three hours before, and it's just, they might have one or two troopers, and accident, you know, accident after accident. And it's the nature of the beast.
Well, thank you for what you're doing.
Well, there's, I've been in several places in the county, because I've got compliance from the Over Hills area about the road, railroad that runs by Over Hills School. People don't pay any attention to the speed limit whatsoever. They use eighty-seven, railroad, barbecue church road, twenty, they use it like an interstate, and don't seem like there's no deterrent.
I, I've talked to several troopers.
They, they just, you know, the road I live on, barbecue church road, if a trooper would sit down at that little church below my house, he could write fifty tickets in two or three hours' time, if he wanted to do it.
And that's fifty miles an hour right there.
And most of them are out of state license plates, so that tells me where they're coming from, you know? They're just not paying any attention.
But I've had several troopers say they've clocked them over seventy miles per hour on railroad in the school zone.
And you'll see on our budget request, ironically, about Over Hills, but I think we might be able to get it out of this year's budget, but we do have those new lights that we're going to put in on railroad. And a lot of people think those are provided by D O T, I always say that, but they're not. We have to buy them if we want them.
And I've asked for a crosswalk at Over Hills too, because of the amount of kids that's crossing over. Wanting to, apartments and housing developments, and we need a crosswalk down there.
So D O T has to do the crosswalk, and the sign for the crosswalk, but those little flashing lights and all, we, we have to provide those. So we're going to, we're going to put those in. Thank you.
Moving along to curriculum discussion, Ms. Bert.
Chairman Jagger, he was aboard, I gave you a handout. Hold on, I'm sorry, I gave you a handout, and Ms. Bert put it up also for my updates. It's hard to believe that we are thirty days from our end of grade testing. So the year has gone by very quickly, but it has been a busy year, but it has definitely been one where everyone has been working. The principals and the staff at the schools, and the district staff. We have been addressing student achievement and working towards improving that. As soon as we finish testing, the school year, we do not have summer off, the principals nor the district staff. We are in the mode, planning for the next year, and planning for summer support. So I broke it down tonight to talk to you about the support we have provided throughout the year and our focus. The first one I wanted to look at was student support. As soon as the school year's over, we start planning for the next year, and we give students summer reading materials to help sustain what they've learned over the summer. When, then we begin traditional summer school and retesting in June. We have summer bridge programs for, for our incoming sixth and ninth graders at all of our middle schools and high schools. We do summer splash for incoming kindergarten students at all schools that have kindergarten. We have our reading camp that lasts three weeks for grades one, two, and three. We have summer trek for our A I G students. And then we are back in school. And we immediately begin, we also have credit recovery during the summer. Student Services Department helps lead that. Then we're back in school, and each school this year had intervention times, including our middle and high schools. We have reading specialists and interventionists that work with our students. We have tutoring before school, during school, and after school. It's different at each site based on their needs. For example, sometimes with the younger children, after school tutoring does not work as well as during the day with someone, because they're so tired at the end of the day, or transportation being, being an issue. But we did have those offered this year. We've used failure-free reading at some of our middle schools. We've also utilized high-impact tutoring with some of our middle school students. And then at the beginning of this semester, when we still had some vacancies in testing positions, we have some virtual teachers that are helping us there. So lots of student support that goes on all through the year, not just during the school year. We also focus on student engagement and opportunities. I won't read every one of these to you, because you know, that is our goal, is to have something for all students, and also to have opportunities for students to advance with our honors courses, our C C P courses, our advanced placement courses. And one thing this year, looking at career education, we actually started major clarity in fifth grade. We backed it up from middle school to fifth grade. We backed it up from middle school to fifth grade. Our teacher support and professional development has been key this year. This has been a very strong focus for the school level and the district level. We started last summer with the curriculum summit, so we had professional development for teachers, and they could come in and earn credits, but also, um, get support in the curriculum. During the school year, they have weekly PLCs at their school, which is the analysis of, um, we heard earlier a question about student data. That's where the school does an analysis of the student data and its current data. Of course, when we start the school year off, we have the testing data. But then they're going to give common formative assessments and testing subjects for M-class, I-ready, and they're going to look at that data and plan instruction. The instructional coaches, we provide at all of our schools. They have an instructional coach that is onsite with them, and they pool this data, lead these PLCs with the teachers, and help them plan what is needed to address, uh, students. Along with the instructional coaches at each school, we have district coaches and coordinators to support these schools, and they're another layer of support that comes in and works with that principal, that instructional coach, and that staff, uh, to support learning. This year, we were able to add our district math coaches for K-five and six-eight. In the past two weeks, I have been meeting with our principals, I met with about fifteen, and the feedback for that has been phenomenal. Um, Dr. Anna Coats and Mrs. Danielle Starkey have done a tremendous job. They go in and they have provided PLCs for these teachers, and have taken the standards and helped them plan, um, for the students. Also, as you know, you approved the use of Bullseye for walkthroughs, and we have increased that usage this year. Again, the schools and the district working together have done a great job. We've done probably three thousand walkthroughs with Bullseye. And that's not counting the observations and the informal walkthroughs. We have had targeted professional development all year long, to, um, grade-level specific, sometimes school-specific, and sometimes teacher-specific. Uh, we've had letters, Benchmark Advanced, Letter, Learning Focused, High School Science and Math One. Um, the middle schools had asked to do something for student engagement, we did that, it was called Board and Busters. We have focused on middle school ELA and math PLCs, in addition to their school PLCs that they're doing for their students. Uh, monthly, our coaches get together here at the district level, teachers come in after school and work on, um, curriculum and content and the standards. We, you know, just giving you an example of how targeted it could be, the High School Science. We pulled one of our best, um, science teachers in the district. She's been here several years, she's a phenomenal teacher, her scores are great, and she worked with teachers that are new to that subject, and that will be testing and teaching this year, and met with them at their schools and provided PD. Um, out of requests for our high school math, we did Solution Tree PD for our high schools, and then we did scaffolding professional development for our middle schools. So, and this is just the, um, tip of the iceberg. This year, there has been PD on, going on constantly, and again, a layered, it might be the whole district, it might be for a school, it might be for a team, it might be, like I said, for a couple of new teachers in a subject area. But lots of focus, because we did have the staffing, um, and I cannot thank you enough that, you know, we have our instructional coaches at the schools and our district coaches and coordinators to do this. The next level of support we want to look at is principal support. We have, um, PLCs for our principals and assistant principals as well. In addition to our principals' meetings, we have PLCs where we may have PD for them. They may do walkthroughs at other school, we may look at data. Um, the principals had a mid-year meeting with their evaluators, that's someone on the cabinet. They also had a mid-year meeting with the superintendent, their spring allotment meetings, so their, um, HR helps them plan positions and needs. We have a spring curriculum meeting where we plan what they need, um, immediately, or what's not been addressed, that's, that's still there. We have, they have done walkthroughs at their sites and other sites. We had HMH come in and do data analysis with our principals. We did have school improvement planning, we actually had targeted PD this year, where we always do the whole group PD, the state even offers some resources for them, but, um, my directors brought them in by schools and worked with them and their teams. We had EVOs professional development, we also sent them, you know, sometimes you can't be a prophet in your own land. We sent them to EVOs PD and got really good feedback from our principals on that. We do keep data dashboards that our accountability department keeps, um, current for the principals. We use retired administrators at school sites, principals and assistant principals, who were very successful when they were here. They are at sites helping, um, and supporting principals. We had six schools, local performing schools, the principal, assistant principal, and the instructional coach, who have participated in the North Carolina Instructional Leadership Academy. Um, we had additional professional development opportunities for the principals as well. Then we look at school support. We have our district coaches and coordinators, um, that provides another layer of support to the schools. We have our lar- uh, early literacy specialists. Uh, Ms. Latoya Reed, she joins us from DPI, and she has been fantastic to have this year. We are, we also use an educational consultant at some of our schools. Again, retired school administrators, where if they're not supporting the principal, we have some administrators that are supporting teachers in the classroom and instruction in the schools. We have AP interns, professional development, based on site needs or requests. We do walkthroughs and feedback, instructional resources for our school, and we're lucky, because of our coordinators, we have K-through twelve MTSS support for our schools. Very important process, part of this process is making sure that we're monitoring the progress of students. So we have our M-class assessment, assessments, our I-ready diagnostic, the NC benchmarks. Teachers, what they've worked so hard in their PLCs, and they use that data to plan the next step. Those are common formative assessments. We use SchoolNet. Schools have also focused on student attendance this year, behavior support, and again, that's where our MTSS supports the teacher, the school, and the student. We have provided core curriculum support. Benchmark Advanced has been a wonderful, um, program for our K-five students. We're seeing the rigor of work with the reading and the writing and making connections. Eureka Math, Alex is, and Achieve are for our middle schools. Exact Path and Ed Mentum are for our high schools. We have Kessler Science in elementary and middle, and Civil Kits that we use that are hands-on in elementary. Part of our work in the PLCs has been some vertical alignment. If I'm going from third to fourth, what does it look like? If I'm going from fifth to sixth, what does that standard look like? We continue to work on pacing guides and additional resources and add to that, and we have plans, again, this summer to go back. We do this based on feedback from our teachers and what we see when we're in the schools, working with them. And then, of course, our district does participate with the region and help develop pacing guides for the new science standards that will roll out this fall. And again, as I shared, K-twelve MTSS support, you will see across the board, is for students, teachers, the curriculum. And then we think about our layered curriculum support, our AIG students. So we had AIG leads that targeted those teachers, as I said, very targeted PD and support, and they provide PD and support to the AIG classrooms with AIG instructional resources. There's a teacher newsletter, there's a parent newsletter. This year, we offered a fourth and fifth grade math enrichment for our AIG students that has been very successful. I actually listened in on a class the other day, it was a virtual group. And then we have our ESL, that, as I shared, that population continues to grow. So we have an ESL lead who provides PD for those teachers, facilitates PLCs, um, provides support, and there's online resources for those teachers. We did purchase Adelante, that is the Spanish version of the benchmark, so that aligns with what they're doing in the regular classroom. And then our schools that have dual language, we have dual-language district classroom support, PLCs and resources. Again, teacher newsletters every month with all of these resources for the teachers to have. Our EC department, they have PD, um, in all areas multiple times a day, if you were to look at the calendar. But they have offered PD, online resources, and PLCs to support our new coaches, our new teachers. As you know, that's one area where we had a lot of turnover, was our EC teachers. So a lot of support in those classrooms this year, and we did have EC coaches and curriculum specialists that helped with that. Then most importantly, we do provide parent support. The schools have done a phenomenal job with parent curriculum nights and other activities to get the parents in. We had the Parent Guide to Student Achievement for our parents. We did have Beyond the Classroom that all of the departments worked on together, and we hope to have another one of those, um, soon. We do parent surveys, we have online resources, parent newsletters that I shared with you. And then we have K-five literacy, um, at-home support, materials that we send home with our students. So as I shared, there's been a lot of work at the school level and at the district level to support our students and increase student achievement this year. Our next steps, we're gonna continue focused on instruction for the next thirty days. We're gonna have Benchmark Advanced PD for our K-five teachers this summer. We continue to have professional development for our K-twelve coaches. They do so much work in our schools with the teachers and, um, planning for that instruction. We're gonna have Train the Trainer Student Engagement PD, where schools will bring teams, and they will learn to, um, take these back and train the teachers in their schools. We'll have many other summer professional development opportunity, opportunities for administrators and teachers, and it's based on their feedback. They always want anything with EC, anything with student engagement, um, so we will definitely have those. We have our summer programs and opportunities for students that I shared with you earlier, we have those again this summer. And though, we also have, um, other things, CTE programs, Career Accelerator programs for the summer. We're gonna continue to focus to add to our teacher resources. Our goal is when the teacher comes to work and they're wanting to teach their students and plan instruction, they have everything they need there with them. Um, also, we'll have some textbook adoptions coming up because of the new science standards, and as always, we'll continue to, um, analyze the data. Any questions on the support that we've provided?
I count twelve under the core curriculum support. I count eight under the monitoring the progress of students. Why in the world do we have so many programs?
Well, I list, they're not, they're not programs separate, they are resources, so where are you at? Now, I'll read them to you.
Like, monitoring progress of students, if we are requiring
So.
Monitoring after, after, after.
I'm sorry.
I mean, if we're continuing to, to do assessments and monitor and assess and monitor, like, when do our teachers have time to teach?
So M-class assessments are aligned with, they're, they're state-mandated. Our I-ready diagnostics are only used in math in three through eight. NC benchmarks are, um, up to the schools which ones they use, except for the, um, math, and that's three through eight. So they're not all, the common formative assessments are the ones the teachers create based on their instruction. Because I agree with you, we do want teachers to focus on teaching, assessing, moving forward. Um, SchoolNet is another resource, it is not a mandatory resource, but teachers like SchoolNet, because this is where they create their common formative assessment. So they are separate grade levels, and, um, they're all not mandated, they're resources there for teachers to use. And what was your other one, Mr. Abate?
Oh, well, that was, you, you basically hit it, so thank you.
Oh, okay.
Um, and that, another question is, um, what's our check-ins, our EZ check-ins looking like, as far as where are we with our students and their growth this year?
Okay, so I've got what I can, I can give with you, I can share with you our most updated. We have, some schools are currently doing their third, um, interim as we speak. And I, and I always want to share with the benchmark that the purpose of the benchmark is to drive the instruction for the teacher in the classroom, so we don't want them rushing, they say, oh, I haven't taught that, and then rush to teach it. Um, if they've not taught it, then they know, they go back and teach it. So this is a, a picture, but it's not a hundred percent, oh, this is everything. Uh, with our third grade reading, I'll just give you a reference point. Um, our EOG scores at the end of the year last year were at forty point one in E, in third grade. They're forty-nine point three with our benchmarks right now. Our fourth grade reading was forty-three point two, fifty-three point nine with our benchmarks. Our fifth grade reading was thirty-five point seven, it's fifty-one point one. Our sixth grade reading was at thirty-eight point one, it's at forty-seven point four. Our seventh grade reading, forty point three, it's at forty-three point six. And our eighth grade reading was thirty-eight point nine, and it's forty-five point four. So, um, but wanting to share, the schools do a really good job of using their benchmark data and monitoring the individual grade levels in students. And when we look at it as a whole district, we have to remember, um, some are not at the same place as others. Third grade math was fifty-one point four, it's currently at forty-seven point eight. Fourth grade math was at forty-two point seven, it's currently at forty-one point two. Fifth grade math was at forty point three, it's at forty-two point one. Sixth grade math is at thirty-five point, was at thirty-five point two, it's at thirty-eight point five. Um, seventh grade math was at thirty-five point four, it's at thirty-seven point one. Eighth grade math was at thirty-three point one, it's at thirty-eight point seven. So we are seeing progress, and every time I meet with the, um, principals or revisit the schools, they're very aware of their current data, whether it's from a common formative assessment or benchmark. Um, and I feel like they've had a really good pulse on monitoring student progress this year.
Great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Now, Ms. Ferguson, one question I had regarding student support. And the summer bridge program for the incoming sixth and ninth graders, now is that a, like, an orientation to middle school and to high school? And is that available to all rising sixth and ninth graders?
Yes, sir, it's a little bit more than the traditional orientation. It started after COVID, um, the state gave money to address the learning loss, and to have the children come in during the summer for special programs that motivate them, and it had to have a, the element of some instruction of ELA and math acceleration was the theme. So when those funds ended, we decided as a district, we wanted to con- continue that. So we do some acceleration activities, um, to introduce us, introduce them to some of the, um, instructional pieces of sixth grade and ninth grade, but they also use it as that orientation piece, that team, that bonding with the students and their teachers. So it is open, and we encourage all rising sixth and ninth graders to do that. And our, um, kindergarten students, we actually have the incoming kindergarten, we cut their day a little shorter, because they get tired, and we go actually two weeks with that, and we invite all incoming kindergarten. And what we'll do this year is to take the data of the students who participated in it last summer and look at their testing data, their attendance data, and their grades, and see if it made a positive impact, and try to track it that way. But I know all the teachers that participated in it, and the schools, they were very positive, enjoyed that time with their students before school started getting, getting to know them.
Thank you.
Ms. Ferguson, I got one question, we get back to Mr. Abate's part about the assessing. Uh, I know every teacher probably does it different, but I've had teacher assistants tell me that all their teacher does is assess, and they have, the teacher or sister has to do the majority of the teaching all day, or how many every day is a week, they decide to assess.
Right.
Or something that, you know, that's all some of them are doing is assessing.
And we can definitely look into that, because that should not be the case. We do have some mandated things, like M-class is mandated, we have to do that. But the way that, there's a little bit more leeway than it used to be, um, so we can definitely check that out, see if we can offer some help and support with that.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving along to, uh, Ms. Thompson, human resource update.
I have remembered to turn my microphone on tonight. Good evening, Chairman Jaggers and members of the board. I want to share some updates in HR. I will say, I want to give the vacancy report, but I also want to put a little caveat here to let you know that now we are posting vacancies for the upcoming school year and now, so when I give these vacancies, we're spanning across two years. And I do have my folks working with the company that we work with frontline to give a better view online of current vacancies. I don't feel like it's all as inclusive, or it's sometimes it's hard to just, you see the vacancies there, but we have, you know, two years spanning on that, so we're working on that. I have Kendra, I had her talk with him today about that, the company. So we have twenty-eight classroom vacancies, thirteen enhancement, or, and that's counselor, CTE, enhancement teachers, eleven EC, and forty-one classified. And I will say, I'm gonna talk about our international staff in a minute, but we've hired a lot of international staff that may not be reflected in these numbers, that's why we need to tighten up this report some in the way that's reported, because those international people. That's why we need to tighten up this report some in the way that's reported because those international people, because of just the requirements of that, what has to be put in the system. Sometimes they're delayed in their reporting. To move on, just so you know, I want to talk a little bit about some of the issues that we have with transportation. But HR and transportation met with schools last week and there are four schools daily that are scheduled to run double routes. I'm going to let you know that. Ben Haven, Over Hills Middle, Over Hills High and Western Harnett Middle. But due to a lack of sub drivers, all schools who have double, all schools would have double routes if they have drivers absent. Transportation has been able to dissolve some double routes with recent drivers who have completed the bus training. The DMV trainer continues to train two employees per week for road work. I'm telling you this just for your information, so you can get a feel for what is happening on that front. Eight employees are scheduled for road work between now and May with a few, with a few employees finishing their DOT physicals and permits from the January class. We still have a hundred and forty four classified employees who need to go through bus training. At the DMV's request, we are now scheduling a class with fifty people in the bus training class. So we have fifty employees to attend our next bus class from May sixth to the tenth at Gentry Education Development Center. We expect those employees to complete the training over the next six months. Now, I want to say, there are concerns among us all, I think Uriah included, that this will bottleneck the road, the road training. But we are doing this at DMV's request, that this is a way to train more people, so, you know, we're trying to be cooperative and do what they ask us to do. And that's the plan. So, just so you kind of can think about this, since January fourteen, people have gotten their bus license, but we had seventeen folks to resign. So I'm going to talk about this in new terms going forward, I told Dr. Fleming. We really don't have a shortage of drivers. We have a shortage of training for drivers. If everyone was trained, we would have enough drivers. So we, we don't, we're not lacking on the hiring of drivers. Cause we have a hundred and forty four people out there that can drive, that cannot drive because they are not trained. So I just want, I'm going to start talking about that differently because I feel like the message is we can't hire enough. But we are hiring enough people, a hundred and forty four people in the wings waiting. If that, if we could have all those people trained, there would be no double routes. I will say to you that we are going back to, and, and just thinking about the possibility of maybe piloting in some sites, A site and just beginning, in the very beginning stages about seeing anything about staggering bus routes again, I know that was controversial. But we just want to get some more feedback on that and think about it some more. Because under the right scenarios, we could save eleven drivers in some areas. And so, I don't want to, that's not an alarm kind of thing, that's just like, we're going to talk about it and go back and look at it a little bit. We still might come to the same conclusion, but we want to get more input, talk to people and then maybe see, including parents and community members, stakeholders, to see what that looks like. We still may determine it will work, but that way we can just get ideas. But if we get our people trained, we wouldn't need that either, so.
If, if I can interject for one moment.
Absolutely.
Dr. Fleming, Uriah, is there any way to get the DMV to certify one of our employees as an examiner for our own staff? Cause that would solve all of our problems.
We can do our own training. We can do that flat out. We can get training through JJ Keller. We can do the classroom work. We can train on the bus. They still have to spend a week with the employees to certify them. We're not, regardless of whatever we do, we're not going to be able to certify them.
That's what I was asking, if, if we could do almost like certain commercial driver's license trucking companies.
Yes.
So they can certify anybody.
Yeah.
As long as they meet certain DMV certifications, they can certify any truck driver. So who's to say we couldn't somehow petition DMV to get them to certify one of our folks as a certified examiner?
Right.
And we can actually create our own certificate for them to take to the DMV to get their license.
And talking with the DMV, I was told we need to take that to the federal level. That school bus is the only one that we can't certify. We can.
We can start a trucking company, we can start a school bus driving company. That's, that's the difference. Cause the CDL has the passenger endorsement, I think is what I was told.
Yes.
Exactly that, that a community, like community colleges, Johnson Community College, CCC, they have CDL trucking courses. You might be able to get the truck, you might be able to get the CDL part, but you got, you know, or air brakes or whatnot. It's the passenger and school bus endorsements, endorsements. What I'm told the feds won't allow us to do.
Yes.
It all comes back to the simple fact that this DMV that we have now is very inefficient, not doing their job. And that's just plain out what it is.
There's a lot of backlog with DMV, I would, I would say that.
And I do think along with that, the training of our, our folks, if we could get them in the program. So we've got them trained and they're having to do the road work, there's an expiration date on that, that it doesn't last forever and then they have to go back through the class, right?
That's right.
So we are working up against that too. Like, that's a little bit of like.
Yeah.
Ms. Fry was like, are you sure about this fifty days? What if we run out of time for them to get their road work done and then their time, their, their kind of their permit expires? You probably can explain that better than I can.
Once, they have ninety days to get their permit and DOT physical from the day they pass their first test. Say they don't pass all, all tests in the classroom, it's the day they pass their first test. So they pass the rest of the test, a week later, it's still ninety days from the first test. And then once they get that permit, it's good, they have to hold it for fourteen days before they can even go out with a DMV trainer. Which he's booking renewals, he's booking those who've already got theirs from prior classes. And then, then he has to work them in, trying to get them as close to fourteen days as possible. But it, it might be right at the end of six months when their permit's expiring before they get to do road work. But the faster these people get their stuff, the faster you can get them in too. But it, it's all going bottleneck in the end. But speaking on the truck stuff, I, I looked into it about as deep as I can go. And cause I was, cause I had to have my own guys, Class A's to do a record. Five thousand dollars to go to a class, or I can pay eight thousand dollars to get my people certified, but then I don't have the space. And the D, the DMV, that's the only space they can use is Littleton Shaw Town. That we can configure the parking lot currently enough to do a bus. So we'll have to have a separate location, even if, just say, if we did, were certified to do separate training.
This is something that I would imagine we could petition our federal legislators on in conjunction with our state legislators to make something like this happen and then partner with Central Carolina and use their emergency service training center. Who's got all the, the highway we need out of the old airport.
Right.
So if, if we could make something like that happen.
I will say the, it's the, I can't remember the acronym, but it's the National Transportation, People Transportation Association. They are fighting to get something similar to the truck driving certification, but they're getting a lot of pushback. And so.
Well, the one thing that I, you know, I asked you about before, our typical bus drivers do not travel out of state.
Correct.
I do, I, I do not understand, coming from the DMV world, why the federal government has anything to do with our buses.
I agree.
I think we need to petition legislature to change, give an in-state only bus driver's license and get the feds out of it. Too much government, that's what we've been dealing with all night tonight, the testing and everything else that we're going through is too much government.
North Carolina was one of the last ones to meet the guidelines for the federal government as far as school bus training. And they, a lot of their funding is federal. And so they were told, meet these guidelines or we're pulling funding. And so here we are.
And none of them involved have anything to do with educating children and getting them to school?
No. Anything else?
Would it be possible, Dr. Fleming, for us to make an appointment with our legislative delegation to discuss this?
Yeah, I can ask our two, certainly our two house members to see if our two federal.
Yeah, you're talking about federal, right?
Cause it would have to be a change in Congress, so it'd have to be a federal code change. So, yeah, we can look at seeing about meeting our two congresspeople. One, you know, both of them are up for election, one's running for election, one is not. So I don't know if that's something you want to work with both of them on or wait until after the election, either way. But we can certainly look at that.
Or make contact with our senators.
And our senators don't want anywhere.
Yep.
Aaron and Dr. Fleming, I don't want to wait. I want you to get in touch with them and see if we can schedule something with them. Because this is the dumbest thing I've heard in a long time.
Yeah, let's definitely explore that then if possible.
Yep.
Thank you.
I'll go on now that I've started the.
You did start.
Well, I did. But I do want to, because I get a lot of questions about why are you not hiring and don't you have enough hired? And so I said, we're really sending the wrong message by how we're talking about it. So I'm going to talk about it in a different way. I want to update you on our full-time subs with our classified folks. I kind of want to give you an overview of how that went. I think it was, it was successful. We began with thirty eight TAs who needed an accommodation that were serving and some were already serving in monitor positions. We, we talked about how we could get to that next process. Ultimately, we had, we had eighteen folks that had to be transferred into other positions. We did some additional work and really worked hard to offer most of those folks an opportunity to monitor. And we currently only have ten people who had to take full-time sub positions out of that thirty eight. And I think that's the great work done by my department, transportation. I think a lot of people worked really hard on that. And, you know, if they are able to go back and drive the bus at any time, or they can, a monitoring position comes open and they want to take that and their position's still open at the school, the option for them to go back to their home site is still there. I will tell you that most, not all, most people were offered a monitoring position. And some flatly refused that and, and took the position anyway. So I feel, I feel like for the most part, it was as good as we could do in that situation. Upcoming, we have international teachers that we are hiring for this upcoming school year. We've tried to capitalize on that work. And we preview or pre-screen, all the R and Rs helped preview and pre-screen over fifty international teachers to review their credentials. They interviewed them virtually and talked with them. And we created a big database with some previews for the principals to be able to look at. We offered those to our priority sites in title two language, that's basically sites who have the most alternatively licensed folks first. And we offered those out to those sites first and gave them first dibs on all those candidates. And then before we let everyone have access to those candidates. So we have confirmed over forty folks for those visiting international teachers for the upcoming school year. There are still thirteen as of the time this report was written, but I've approved a few, so I feel like there might be less than thirteen who can be placed. And I am still continuing to beg for science and math teachers, or my staff is, to help supplement this upcoming school year. Just, you know, we've switched our teacher of the year banquet and we're calling it the educator banquet, just, just so you have that background knowledge. So we're trying to recognize more people, so we're going to honor our teacher of the year there, our beginning teacher of the year there. You know, we always present the ring for the principal of the year there. And we are also going to recognize some other members of our staff across all areas. So maintenance, transportation, student services, EC, everybody. So we have categories, we nominated folks for those categories. We narrowed that down to two out of every category and then picked a winner. Those folks have been notified and we will pick a district support winner out of that group that'll be announced that same night. So that's why we're calling it educator banquet, because all these folks in one way or another are an educator. And I feel like it gives us a way to really honor people who've given a lot to our district beyond, beyond the classroom. So I'm very excited about that. That's April twenty ninth, as we said before. The twenty five year celebration is coming up. It'll be at the May sixth board meeting at five o'clock before the meeting. We will have refreshments there and a time to honor them before the board meeting starts. We attended the job fair at UNC Charlotte on April twelfth and interviewed, interacted with several high quality spring graduates. We've also recently attended a job fair at UNCP East Carolina and UNC W. Harnett County Schools will sponsor its annual TA to Teacher Information Night, or Information Day on May thirty first at the Harnett County Resource Center and Library. All classified staff will be invited to attend and learn more about the TA teacher programs from our local EPPs. Participants will be provided lunch and this continues to grow because now we have a total of nine universities. UNC Charlotte and Gardner-Wade will be joining us this year as, as potential candidates for our TAs. Our North Carolina Teaching Fellows Plan was approved at the state level and is on the agenda tonight. So once approved, we will start promoting and disseminating that information to high school seniors. Additionally, we will attend a pilot meeting in Raleigh on April the eighteenth. So I'm really excited about that because it's fifty thousand dollars for us to give away scholarship money for, for potential teachers. This rolls right into our growing greatness program, which we're using it with that. This is our fourth year. And I'm so excited to say that there are sixteen participants returning, so it's working and they're coming back to work with us. And we're adding twelve new to the cohort, so that's quite some growth from the beginning. Almost, you know, almost doubled our group and hopefully by the end, we might be up to sixteen in this new group. Our signing day is May third at ten o'clock in the boardroom. And our summer dates for that are June tenth through the thirteenth, June seventeenth through the twentieth and the twenty fourth through the twenty seventh. We're having to vibe that group up some now to provide some more scaffold experiences for the more experienced group and the, and the new group. My staff will be attending the personnel conference at the end of this month. And I want to take a few minutes to talk with you about a new option that I, that we are working on for. Many times you hear about the people who have not completed the requirements for the upcoming school year to receive a contract. Either they would have to be, according to law, according to this law, we either have to offer them a contract or we currently have to not renew them, or they can resign. And, and, and then if they complete those requirements and the principal holds their spot, then they can get their position back. Which I would say that happens ninety five percent of the time with those folks. Many of them, some of us out of their hands, some of, you know, it's a lot of things. Some people wait, you know, wait to enroll classes till later and some people couldn't get the class till later. It just depends on a lot of things. So many times those classes don't end until June and we have to offer the contracts before then. And so we are working on a, something we are going to call as a transition position. Where basically that they can, they can request or sign a request to transfer into a full-time like sub position and keep their benefits. Now this will be at the beginning of the year, but most of the time, you see, most of them finish those requirements during the summer. So it's just, it's just an alternative, them having to resign their position. And we've got some specific criteria set out for that, like, you know, they have to be in good standing. They have to provide proof of their coursework. If they have, we want to see how their growth looks or if their growth is not positive. Cause sometimes for new folks, it's not as positive as we'd want it to be. Their principal might could speak to, you know, the extenuating circumstances around that. They need to be recommended by their principal. And so then they could request this transition position for them. And we could move them into that position instead of asking for their resignation. And so I think that is going to be helpful. So we're working on that. We're going to talk to the principals about it. I already spoke to them about it last month, but I'm going to talk to them about it again at the principal's meeting this week. And if they get their, so if they get their stuff done over the summer, it would never affect their pay. You, you know, only if they didn't get, if it took them till like September to finish their work, they'd have to be paid in the beginning as a sub. And then let's just say they completed their coursework August the thirtieth, then it would, and they got their license retroactive back then. That's how the pay is for that. So, but it all depends on when their license is issued for how we could pay them going forward. So that's on the horizon. I just want you to know that we know athletic trainers has been a challenge for our sites, for some of them to fill those positions. And we are working with Mr. Pearson on finding some alternative ways to provide trainers for schools this upcoming school year. And I'll share more about that at the next meeting. Just one final thing, we are working to, working with Campbell University to work with our state legislators on funding for another MSA admin cohort program for the upcoming school year. We are working on currently setting up a meeting with them. This has been very helpful because our. This has been very helpful, because our interns have received a fully-paid internship, so that's been additional support. And I believe, I mean, we, it's helped us a lot, we've hired almost all those interns, it's at three or four, maybe four, and so that's been extremely helpful going forward. I hope that we'll be able to work on that, and work with Campbell on that as we continue with Dr. Schmidt, and she certainly produces quality candidates for her program. And I think that's all I have, I know that was a mouthful unless you have any questions for me.
What was the, excuse me, the date in May for the TA to Teacher event?
Um, and I'll try to get something out to y'all officially about that and an invitation, I will, May thirtieth, thirty-first, May thirty-first, I'm sorry.
Anything else from Ms. Thompson?
Mr. White's not here.
Moving along, Mr. Cox.
Thank you, Chair Jaggers, board members, and finance, we're getting our year-end, year-end closing procedures to gear up, to close out the school year. We're trying to finalize PRC-071, which is a low-well teacher supplements. Last year, each teacher received one thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars in supplement through that program, and it looks like we're gonna be around one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars this year for that, and we'll know, and that'll be paid in April, and we'll know in the next few days what the actual amount turns out to be, we're trying to figure out who qualifies and what the actual number is to fit within the dollar amount that DPI has allocated to us. Open enrollment for flexible benefits, which is dental, vision, flexible spending, dependent care spending, et cetera, opened today and will run through May third, this is for benefits starting September one, twenty twenty-four, and will run through August thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. And with today being Tax Day, wanted to remind all staff who may be listening, if any are listening, that you now may be a good time to look at your tax withholding forms, if you need to adjust those for taxes for twenty twenty-four, to please do that and submit those to your payroll contact. And I know you guys are disappointed, but that concludes my report unless you have any questions for me.
Anything else from Mr. Cox? Somebody's got a question, I'm sure.
Yes, per teacher, yeah.
There's the one question, thank you, Mr. Cox. Moving along to discussion items, CCC trustee, Harnett County Board of Education representative.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the current board, the current Harnett County Board of Education trustee is Mrs. Gina Morris, her terms on, her term on the CC, CC Board of Trustees expires on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. You as a board will ask for a nomination or nominations, and ultimately a vote on a representative at the May sixth, twenty twenty-four meeting, this really can be anyone, but they can serve two four-year terms on the CC, CC, or Central Carolina Community College Board of Trustees. And, you know, we've had a background of all two, Ms. Gina Morris, of course, is a retired teacher, we've had business people, we've had other public servants, we, I believe we named one, I think the commissioners may be two in each of the three counties. Your representative does have to be voted on by both the Lee County and Chatham County Board of Education, so it's kinda been an unwritten rule, they'll approve yours.
We approve theirs.
They approve theirs, that's right, for all three counties, and so our term is up, and you just need to think of someone, and then, Mr. Chairman, I would suggest on May sixth, that we'll have this as an action item, but you open up nominations, take those nominations, and then vote. And that person would begin, begin on July one for one term, and you can renew them again at the end of four.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Fleming. So, everyone understands if you have anybody? Okay. Moving along to the election, primary runoff election on May fourteenth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the executive director of the Harnett County Board of Elections has asked us to take a kind of a no-in-person instruction or a workday, whatever it may be, but no students in the building on the May fourteenth runoff. Prior to that request, our schools did put a sheet together on how they could, or put some ideas on paper, I guess you could say, on how they could make the day run while still having the runoff election. I wanna kinda throw that in your lap, if you will, if you would like to have a normal instructional day, if we do, you'll see, for the most part, it's gym and PE classes that would kinda be off limits that day, if we did have class, if we don't have school and it's virtual learning, obviously that would not be an issue. Probably the only little tidbit of knowledge I would throw out there is EOGs do begin on the fifteenth, so the question would be, well, that's a review day of review or not, I would certainly hope students would have what they have before the day before the test, but I will throw that out there for your discussion, currently it's not an action item. If we keep it as a current school day, no action would be required. If you do wanna turn it to a virtual day, remote day, we would need to convert that to an action item.
I don't like some of the comments that were made, because that's disturbing there about codes, you know, what was put in there about codes, having someone come, people come in and vote.
Yes, right, that's correct.
Intoxicated, that was kinda annoying. Um, I just gotta, what do you think the attendance, I mean, the voter turnout's gonna be, I mean, is it?
I may be wrong in speaking completely out of place here, but I don't expect it to be as, as high as if it was a typical primary day or the general election day, and at least for our elementary and middle schools, I think that's gonna be an important day of review, you know, I'm sure that our high school teachers would appreciate a workday getting ready for exams, but at the same time, I think our elementary and middle schools need all the review they can get. And another option would be, I'm not at all saying this is a good one, but, you know, you could, if you wanted to just do, I think Western's, if you wanna do Western, Harnett as a remote day and not the others, or just these schools as a remote day and not the others, of course, you get into some issues there where some kids are in school and some are not, so going along with your comment, I just thought about that, I guess you could, in theory, just the schools involved in elections could be out, not the others, but I don't know that that's the best idea.
There would be no hesitation on my part if it was in a regular, I mean, it was a regular election day, but being it's a runoff day, I just don't know that the turnout's going to be that heavy.
Yeah, being a primary, historically, they're not, in particular, not a very competitive, competitive primary, just a few races, I'd be surprised if it had a huge turnout on that day.
Does the testing window open on that day, or are we actually testing on the fifteenth? Testing on the fifteenth?
That starts your ten days, I believe, right?
Well, Dr. Fleming, I mean, I'll call for a vote if you need, but I'm, I'm not, I'm opposed to doing anything other than a regular school day, I mean, if y'all want me to call for a vote, then.
You wouldn't need to, I don't think, unless you wanted to convert it to a non-student day, but. And a question regarding the Board of Elections, have we indicated that we don't want them using our schools? We have, numerous times. I heard that comment on Board of Elections meeting, and I hadn't heard it, so I just wanted to hear. Yeah, I think we've requested a few times to, and I'll tell you the place that's the most disruptive of any of them, is at Western during the early voting, because you're tying the gym up for two weeks, or how many, early voting.
All right, just for the record, I am not for making it a non-school day, I want it to be a regular school day.
Yeah, that's right, so you don't have, have any action if rest of the board, unless someone wants to make a motion.
Okay, all right, so no, keep it a regular school day. Moving along to, catch it up again?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, Mr. Chairman.
That does help. Motion is second, it is a consent agenda, Chairman votes aye.
Power votes aye.
Abate aye.
Gane aye.
Here are no nay votes, the motion carries, moving along to the action items, review and consider approval of Secret Tenet's twenty-four, twenty-five local budget request.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm in your board packet, but also at your seat, you have a little larger version here to look at, this is our local appropriation funding request, followed by the facility needs request, I took from what you shared last time, worked it up in conversation with Mr. Cox, as well as some officials at the county level and talking about an appropriate local supplement number. We did make a decision to put the goal in there, which is eighteen percent, that's eleven point five five three, but felt like in the costing of that through the county, you know, that could either raise potential tax increases, that could, you know, in essence, the county would not be able to meet that, so we decided for a first step in that goal, to start with a twelve percent local supplement this year, continue, twelve percent local supplement for this year, but continuing towards that eighteen percent goal in years to come, maybe two, three years. So, at the twelve percent supplement, you're looking at roughly five point five million dollars for that, those lines below it talk about the principal assistant principals' request for a local supplement increase, an increase in the state salary increase with retirement and health insurance costs going up, it's that local portion of the employer-paid salary and benefits, and then the classified salary before, or excuse me, classified salary based on the current salary study, this is an average, that's not necessarily the final number, but we do have to pass a number on to the commissioners, and so we went with that. I don't believe anything else has changed, we did list some vehicles and all in there, and then on the facility needs list, again, nothing there has changed. The only change you will see between the document you have in board docs and this printed document, is we did transpose a number going from the school facility needs list, tier one's needs list into the actual budget document, but we did not change any content in there. This evening, I ask for your request, I request, not talk tonight, this evening, I request your approval of the funding request, there we go, if you choose not to do that tonight, that's fine, you do have to do it by the end of April, because it is statutorily due in May to the Board of Commissioners, but happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman, since this is a action item, it would be my motion that we approve this local appropriation funding request for discussion purposes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, now we'll open it up for discussion. I, I agree one hundred, because you know, I asked you about making it to twelve instead of asking for the whole eighteen at one time, because this twelve percent, that's not, that's not a settlement, that's what we want to have, we've got to have that to continue to keep our teachers.
Not that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just don't say definite, at least a twelve percent in order to remain competitive with retaining our teachers from these surrounding school systems that have a larger tax basis and can obviously, you know, offer more in terms of supplement, so that'd be a starting point.
And if you got the twelve percent, the good, I'm sorry, Mr. Powell, if we got to the twelve percent, just so you know, that would only leave three counties touching us, which is still a lot, three counties touching us that had higher than a, higher than that, and that would be Johnston, Cumberland, Johnston, Cumberland, and Wake.
So, I'm, I'm in complete agreement, the commissioners aren't gonna give us eighteen percent, you know, that's, it is what it is, but how many times in years past, I know I've only been a part of this budget for one time prior to this, but, you know, how many times is that we tell them what we need, we give them a number we can live with, and then whenever we actually get the numbers, July one, it's, it's less than what we actually asked for. So, my thoughts, you know, we are putting it in there that we want a number such as eighteen percent, however, when is it appropriate that we come in and, you know, come up with a, with a tiered or a step response that they will agree to, say, you know, we'll be happy with twelve this year, next year we'd like a three percent additional raise, and then year three, another three percent, to get us to that eighteen percent, you know, how do we lay something like that out, so they will come back and, you know, agree to it, and we move forward with a agreement between us and the commissioners?
I, I think during the joint meeting is the time to have that conversation, because I certainly, we certainly can't just go grab the money and run, so I think, you can try, that's right, so we would have to maybe come up with an agreement with them if they could do, let's say, a twelve-three-three, or whatever, you know, whatever combination out there.
Well, I think the whole purpose of this is to get, you know, our budget submitted, but I agree that the meeting, we have a joint meeting, that's when we need to hash it out completely.
You know, it's never made by Mr. Matthews, since he's been a commissioner, however, there have been statements by other commissioners that the Harnett County Schools don't ask for things, and that we get what we ask for, so.
Is that the first incorrect statement you've ever heard?
No, I, I want it out there.
Mr. Chairman, I do wanna, I do wanna say, because I, you know, I'm one of those wanting to give benefit when I can here, but, so, in the last couple of years, the commissioners have increased their investment in the schools significantly, I think sometimes where that does get confused, and when those types of statements maybe are made, is the commissioners can give us a certain amount of money and say, do whatever you want with it, and it's under the amount request, under, under the amount requested. Where you see an increase, and where they have helped us out, if you take like the Evolve Systems, for example, when you add the amount of the Evolve plus capital money plus current expense expansion dollars, it looks like they did give us more than we asked, so in fairness, they did. The problem is, it's kinda categorized to, you know, you can use Evolve money for Evolve, that type of thing, right, that's right, so that, that's potentially, I don't know that to be true, but I think potentially that may be where some of that's coming from, is the fact that, yes, we are getting at, or even above what we asked for, but it's, you know, if we, we're very appreciative of weapons detection systems, I wanna make that add-on clear, but we can't pay salaries with that money.
Dr. Fleming, I wanna make sure we, we say it publicly, we are appreciative of everything we have gotten. The problem we're running into is teacher retention, and the county believes in retention of employees, because they have looked at, they've done several salary studies for the county employees, figuring out a way to make sure they have retention. All we're asking for is really look hard at what we're asking to try to help us with our retention, is that accurate?
That's correct.
One hundred percent.
So, does anybody have anything else they'd like to say before I call for the vote? Here are none of them. Chairman votes aye.
Power votes aye.
Abate aye.
Gane aye.
Here are no nay votes, motion carries, moving along to, review and consider WAN service contract, that's it, or WAN?
WAN. Good evening, Chairman Jaggers and members of the board, we went out for bid for our WAN service this year, we've not done that in seven years, so we had signed a five-year agreement with two one-year voluntary extensions, and we were able to use both of those. The first year, we used our voluntary extension, our company, which was Conterra, offered to run the fiber to our New Ben Haven School in return for assigning that, and then last year, for assigning the second one-year voluntary extension, they were able to run it to the new Northwest Harnett Elementary School for half the price. So, this year, we were back out for bid, because we were out of extensions, and so after the bids came in, we received five bids, we are recommending to continue services with Conterra, they've offered to run fiber to our new purchasing location, as well as move our data center from the old LEC over, the core switch over to the new Gentry Educator Development Center. This is a five-year contract with This is a five-year contract with multiple voluntary one-year extensions as well.
And you have been pleased with this company for the past seven years for the most part?
Yes, sir. It's their private fiber. They own from, from end to end. So we don't share with anyone. It's our fiber.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion. Motion is second. Any further discussion? Here are no, Chairman votes aye.
Powell votes aye.
Abate aye.
Gani aye.
Here are no nay votes, motion carries. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Jaggers and members of the board. Sorry. You tell me when. So we had three bids for a structured cabling. We're looking at redoing the cabling inside of Dunn Middle School, Custerwood Middle School, Highland Middle School, and Lafayette Elementary School. And we recommended to go with ANC or Applied Network Consulting for this cabling job. And this is just a one-year. Just, we'll open the PO, do the work, and close the PO.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion?
What is structured cabling?
Just redoing all of the CAT five cable, CAT six cabling. Some of it still has CAT three cabling. So we just always want to keep the cabling up, up to grade.
Chairman votes aye.
Powell votes aye.
Abate aye.
Gani aye.
Here are no nay votes, motion carries. Item D, review and consider approval of school bus connectivity.
Thank you, Chairman Jaggers and members of the board. We are only one of, I think, eight districts in the state of North Carolina that applied for the money. So we, we won't, we've been afforded this opportunity, so we're excited about this. We will have Wi-Fi on all two hundred ninety-three of our buses. And we're going to be able to do this project with little to no funds out of our, our funds, Harnett County funds. We received several bids. It took quite a long time to go through this bid application. We received seven, but at the end of the day, Harnett County Schools would like to recommend Kajit. They offer a filtering service that allows us to go in easily and make sure that we're keeping our children safe on their devices while they're on the buses.
Motion approved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Is that who we've been using?
Yes, sir.
I thought so.
Yes.
Here are no further discussion?
We are upgrading the 5G equipment.
Powell votes aye.
Abate aye.
Gani aye.
Here are no nay votes, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's, that's a big deal, Mr. Chairman.
Item E, review and consider EC related service contracts.
Good evening, Chairman Jaggers and members of the board. This is a related service contract. We're going to start our EC students.
Motion approved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Here are no, Chairman votes aye.
Powell votes aye.
Abate aye.
Gani aye.
Here are no nay votes, motion carries. Review, item F, review and consider approval of Harnett County Schools' teacher scholarship plans.
Chairman Jaggers, members of the board, this is a new opportunity. We have, we already sent a $20,000 grant that we applied for to provide basically five, $10,000 scholarships in addition to the money we already, already offered for students. And they can earn up to $1,500 a year. And so over the course of time, they have a real opportunity to get about $16,000 toward their teaching degree. If that's what they choose to do, some of them will, oh, and some of them will just compete at grown greatness fees. Some will be able to get grown greatness or the teach foundation. But they carried out with a career in college promise with CCCC. Some of them could come out with a pretty good deal on their education going forward. They should go and teach, and so that's what I present tonight.
Ms. Thompson, will this be strictly at Campbell University? Or is this a conjunction?
We are working, yes, but I will say there may be some deviation from that depending on how the interest we have going forward.
Motion approved, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion.
Second.
Yes, second. Any further discussion? Here are no, Chairman votes aye.
Powell votes aye.
Abate aye.
Gani aye.
Here are no nay votes, motion carries. Item G, review and consider approval of updated SRO reimbursement, reimbursement agreements.
Chairman, Chairman Jaggers, members of the board. As you'll remember, it was your desire and you made a request to the county commissioners to allocate a $5,000 one-time bonus to our SROs. And there was some miscommunication, I think, at the county level in which the municipalities were not included in that. What this does is correct that MOU and provide an amendment so that the municipalities can receive that $5,000 one-time bonus for their SROs. At this time, the commissioners have approved that. The county manager, the chairman has signed that. And we've received the MOUs back with the amendment from the Town of Andrew, Town of Dunn, and Town of Irwin. They're included in your packet tonight. And I would request your approval of that so that we can get those out. We have not received the MOUs back from the Town of Coach or the Town of Lillington. As soon as we do, we'll bring those to you as well.
Motion to approve as presented, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Can I have a motion and a second? Discussion. Mr. Matthews, can we, is there some way from now on when we do a vote on SROs that we, because I know I did, and I know some that, we are thinking we're doing it for all. You know what I mean, we.
I understand. And I will tell you, the commissioners thought they were doing it for all too.
Right.
Somehow or another, that communication was not, did not go, was not interpreted the same way by the county officials. But we did correct that.
Thank you. Chairman votes aye.
Powell votes aye.
Abate aye.
Gani aye.
Here are no nay votes, motion carries. Moving along to review and consider approval of the purchase of two Ram twenty-five-hundred crew four-wheel drive trucks.
Chairman Jaggers, members of the board, this is a request to, to purchase two replacement trucks for our custodial services department from our capital allotment from the county this time, for this year. Generally, these would not come before you because the bids would be on individual vehicles. But this company actually put both on one, and so exceeded the $90,000 threshold. So I would like your approval to approve this contract so that we can purchase those vehicles.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here are no, Chairman votes aye.
Powell votes aye.
Abate aye.
Gani aye.
Here are no nay votes, motion carries. Item I, review and consider approval of contracts for roof replacement at Johnsonville School.
Well, I, I and Jay kind of go together. We are, it's the materials and basically to replace the roofs on the, the front building, the oldest building there. So we have most of that school renovated at this time. So it is in desperate need of replacement. And that is CIP money that it would come from, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Here are no, Chairman votes aye.
Powell votes aye.
Abate aye.
Gani aye.
Here are no nay votes, motion carries. He explains, item J, review and consider approval of purchased supplies and material.
Pursuant to the recommendation, motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Here are no, Chairman votes aye.
Powell votes aye.
Abate aye.
Gani aye.
Here are no nay votes, motion carries. Before we go into closed session, I just want to recognize Chairman Bill Morris, county commissioners. He snuck in all this. I thought you had security out there.
Yeah, apparently it's not very good.
Thank you for visiting us. You just missed the budget talk a while ago. You probably would have been in here.
Well, I got here just in the nick of time.
Yeah, you did.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143, 318, 11A, 1A, 3, and A6, to prevent the disclosure of confidential personnel files under GS 115C 321, to consider matters relating to the initial employment of an individual employee and to consult with the board's attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion, rippers, closed session. Here are no, Chairman votes aye.
Powell votes aye.
Abate aye.
Gani aye.
Here are no nay votes, motion carries. We are going to closed session. We are going to closed session. After a motion in closed session, we have came back to open session. Is there any further business before this board?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the dismissal of two classified employees as discussed in closed session.
I'd like a motion, Mr. Chairman, to quid pro quo on these two employees.
Second.
Motion in second. It is a personnel matter. Chairman votes aye.
Powell votes aye.
Abate aye.
Gani aye.
Godfrey aye.
Hearing no nay votes, the motion carries. Any further business from the superintendent? No, we need a-
We got one action.
I got a, a motion to amend the agenda to add on, what is it? Item B?
Item B.
Item B.
Under B for your actions from closed session, the resolution to acquire land.
Yeah, resolution in order of condemnation.
Condemnation. That's been added in second. Any further discussion? Chairman votes aye.
Powell votes aye.
Abate aye.
Gani aye.
Hearing no nay votes, the motion carries. Will you read the resolution now, sir?
Thank you, Chairman Jaggers, absolutely. So, resolution in order of condemnation, whereas the Harnett County Board of Education, the board owns property at 736 Rollins Road in Fuquay Varina, North Carolina, and is in the process of satisfying all municipal requirements for the construction and development of the Northwest Harnett Elementary School to serve the citizens of Harnett County. And whereas to satisfy all municipal requirements for Northwest Harnett Elementary School, the board needs to construct a stormwater detention facility. And whereas Duke Energy Progress LLC, Duke Energy, is the owner of a utility easement across the board's property in the same area that the board has determined to be the location of the required stormwater detention facility. And whereas the board is making efforts toward negotiating with the Duke Energy to acquire such rights as may exist to satisfy the municipal requirements. And whereas the board is under time constraints to construct the stormwater detention facility. And whereas in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 115C 517 and 40A 1 through 70, the board has the authority to condemn property for public school purposes. Now therefore, be it resolved by the board that the easement herein described be condemned for acquisition of those rights of Duke Energy and that the superintendent or his designee is hereby authorized to all acts necessary to institute and conclude an action for condemnation pursuant to the provisions of North Carolina General Statute 115C 517 and 40A 1 through 70.
Motion to approve resolution as presented.
Motion in second. Any further discussion about the resolution? Hearing no chairman votes aye.
Powell votes aye.
Abate aye.
Gani aye.
Hearing no nay votes, the motion carries. I'll entertain one more motion.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.